Welcome to the Wednesday, June 8th, meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The time is now 7:54. The board has been in executive session. Can I have a motion, please, to reopen the public meeting? All in favor? Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, with their God, and with his whole liberty and justice for all. Good evening. I apologize, I'm going to be a little bit longer than usual tonight. I want to start by mentioning that we had a lovely celebration earlier this evening honoring this year's retirees from the district. We are so thankful to our teachers, faculty, and staff who have given so much of their time, energy, and enthusiasm to our district and our kids, and we congratulate all of this year's retirees on their amazing milestone. While not a retirement, I'm sure you will notice that there's someone up here who is leaving us, although I'm not quite sure what happens if we just vote no. You know, I don't know how that works. Tony, we are so happy for you. We know that you will be a phenomenal superintendent. I've only known you for three years but have learned so much from you, and you are truly one of the nicest, most dedicated people I've ever met. The day your appointment at Chappaqua was announced, a friend of mine and Jericho, where you had been her son's principal, wrote to me and said, "You got Tony, you're so lucky." And that's how we all feel. So we are so sorry to see you go, but we wish you all the best and congratulate you on this next step in your career. I also then want to, yeah, acknowledge Andrew Corsilia, he's out there. Who's being appointed to the Assistant Superintendent role that Dr. Sananes is leaving. I know that this move is being met with really mixed reactions, and I get it. Andrew is an absolutely fabulous high school principal, and Greeley is better placed because of him. We are really excited, though, to have Andrew stay in Chappaqua and be able to take this next step in his career, and we're looking forward to supporting him through this transition to his new role and what it means for the district. Andrew will not be leaving Greeley until his replacement has been found and is ready to start. If that means Tony's position is open and we may do for a little bit, we will do. Nobody, least of all Andrew Corsilia, wants to leave Greeley in the lurch. So we are conducting a full and extensive search for the best replacement for Greeley, and it's a top priority for us to find the absolute best candidate for the job. I also want to acknowledge Jamie Edelman, who is being permanently appointed to the Assistant Superintendent of Pupil Personnel Services, a role she's been capably and enthusiastically filling for the last year. Jamie, thank you for continuing in this role. You're doing a great job for our kids and our families, and we're so happy to keep you on board. You will hear the presentation a little bit later on the Special Education Strategic Planning Initiative, and I've had the pleasure of working on this, and there are a lot of great plans and ideas, and Jamie, I'm thrilled that you're going to be at the helm of this work. I want to address sort of generally the movement that's been happening within the district. I know that when many of us were students, administrators held positions for their entire careers, or at least it felt that way. I remember when my elementary school principal retired, it was a big deal because he had been in that office for around 30 years. I'm actually not sure he actually physically left that office in 30 years. I don't think we as kids ever saw him outside of it. It's a different job in a different world today, and when we all did our board training, part of what they talked about is that the average time an administrator holds a post is four to five years. Part of what we strive to do here in Chappaqua is to provide growth opportunities to our teachers and our administrators so that when people leave Chappaqua for all their opportunities, they are ready to grow, and we can promote from within and keep their talents, knowledge, and relationships here in Chappaqua. So we're really, really happy that we're able to do that in a lot of roles this year. Sticking with Greeley, I want to congratulate the senior class on their senior class musical, which was a great success, and on their upcoming graduation. And congratulations to all our kids graduating middle and elementary schools in the coming weeks. You've all had a hard few years, and you've done great. Congratulations, too, to all the parents helping them through, whether it took a few kind words or a much bigger push, you've done great, too. I also want to thank the BSU, Philip Marcus, Tanuke Kopa, and all of our administrators, teachers, students, community presenters, and everyone I'm sure I'm forgetting for a wonderful Community Day event this week. You guys all took all the feedback we had gotten from parents in the community and created a phenomenal event that was welcoming, inclusive, educational, and celebratory. We heard the parents wanted to be included and hear what their kids were learning, so parents were invited to hear the speakers and to participate in the evening workshops. I look forward to many more similar events. June is also Pride Month. I want to say loudly and clearly to our LGBTQ+ students, families, faculty, administrators, staff, friends, and community members, you are appreciated, welcomed, and celebrated in this community. Our kids will read books representing your families and your experiences, and we will say gay and lesbian and bi and trans and love in our classrooms and in our school communities. Before our next meeting, we will also celebrate Juneteenth, and I hope that all of our families celebrating have a wonderful and meaningful holiday. So there's been a lot of good and celebratory information to discuss tonight, but we also need to talk about Texas. And I'm struggling with what even to say. I remember when Sandy Hook happened, my daughter was one, and I sat clutching her on the couch watching this horror on the news, wondering how I would ever be able to put her on a school bus and let her go to school, praying something would change regarding automatic weapons in civilian hands. But she's 10 now, and I still clutch her coasts, worry about sending her to school or the grocery store or a movie theater, and nothing has changed. So here's what I will say. We as a board and as a district are committed to doing everything we can to keep our kids as safe as we can. We are committed to every child in our district, and these are our kids, too. The majority of the board, as well as our superintendent, is sending our own kids into these buildings every single day. We did a full district safety audit recently, and almost every recommendation has been implemented, and others will be presented for the community to consider. And when we talk through the committee reports, Jane is going to speak to what the Health and Safety Committee has been also looking at now. We are continually and constantly talking about safety and security, and we will keep doing so. I want to be upfront, the community may not hear all of those conversations. Health and safety are matters that are appropriate for executive session, but we will continue to keep working to keep our kids safe, and hopefully so will our elected officials at every level. Hopefully, this is the last time anyone up here is going to have to talk about one of these incidents. So with that, I conclude my president's report. We do have one item that we need to vote on under 1.1, which is 1.1.1, which I will move, which is be resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the meeting calendar for the 2022-2023 school year. So I will move 1.1.1. Any questions, conversation, all in favor?
Thank you, Hillary, and I'll start our superintendent's report, and we have two presentations this evening, but I will, so I will go as quickly as possible for, through our first few slides here, so let me just, let me just have like a, here we go. All right, so I'd also like to extend my congratulations to our retirees. Thank you for those of you who came this evening, for us to celebrate you alongside your families. Our retirees have given so much of themselves to help support our school district throughout their career, but especially in the past few years, as many of them could have retired but chose to stay on to help see our district through our COVID crisis. So just want to extend my gratitude to all of our retirees on this next important step in their lives and thank them for their service to the students of our district. Let me just get two more meetings for me to share this. So here's our current vaccination numbers for our community. We're pretty steady here. Everyone now is above 85%. Some buildings are above 90. This is where we currently stand. Our numbers have significantly decreased, which is great news going into our celebratory events. Right now, we're at nine for the entire district, and we're at one cluster in one building. So I'm really happy to report that. But with that said, we will still continue to have our events outside as much as possible. I just think it's smart to do, and actually, it's nice. So even if the pandemic ended today, I think there's some things that make sense for us to continue outside. So I just wanted to share that with you. I also wanted to note that there is a resolution on the agenda for your consideration. We need to have some additional analysis completed for the DEP with regards to the approval process for the Zotter property, so you'll see that noted in the consent agenda. I know that Hillary had shared our important appointments this evening. I'll make some comments regarding Tony at his last meeting, which is not tonight, so just be prepared for that, Tony. But I do want to just acknowledge his appointment again. As you know, Jamie has been serving as our interim Assistant Super for Pupil Personnel Services. I asked Jamie to step into that role two years ago, and she has exceeded all of our expectations. The care and commitment to our students and supporting our children who have different needs and our families has been extraordinary, and the attention to which she is supporting our CSC chairs, our director, and our faculty has been exemplary. And I really look forward to partnering with Jamie as we begin to address some of our target areas identified in our strategic planning process, and it makes total sense for Jamie to be leading that. She knows our district, she understands our families, and I couldn't be more pleased to recommend her tonight for permanent appointment to this position. So thank you, Jamie. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Christine, for all of those kind words. I have been in this position since November 1st and look forward to working with the families, students, faculty, and staff to continue to see how we can strengthen the Pupil Personnel Department and improve teaching and learning for our students. I have found it to be a very rewarding position as we do what we can to make school a happy, healthy, productive, learning environment for all students. So I am honored to be being appointed to this role this evening, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Jamie. And for our second appointment, I just would like to acknowledge Andrew. He's here tonight, and he will also be sharing a few words, but I would like to share for our families who haven't had the opportunity to meet Andrew, that he has been in this district for 24 years. He has extensive leadership experience in hiring and teaching experience in our district. His disposition, professionalism, and attentiveness to the needs of all of our students and their families and our staff have made him successful in every role that he's had here. He's been, of course, a teacher, an assistant principal, he's been the Seven Bridges principal, and now he's here at Greeley. And I know many families are concerned about what's next for the high school, and I think that's a testament to Andrew's leadership. He's a wonderful person, an exceptional parent, and a colleague who truly cares about the organization and the success of all of our students. And so I'm very pleased to recommend him tonight for your consideration to be a part of the central office team. I think amplifying Andrew's leadership throughout the district will make us a stronger organization for our students. So Andrew, would you like to come up and say a few words, please?
Thank you for all of those really kind words. I feel kind of strange, I'm so far away from everybody here, I can't see how else. I'm really grateful for your trust and support, trust and support of the community in moving to this new role and with a broader scope. And I know as a, from my years being a teacher in the district and an administrator and from a parent, I know about the impact teachers have on students. It's incredible, and I know that our teachers here stay for entire careers, they stay 30 years. They literally teach thousands of students in our district, so I can't think of a role that's more important than seeking out and hiring and supporting and nurturing the best possible people we can have here working with our kids. You know, I'm also looking forward to the leadership development part of the role. You know, I benefited from leadership development throughout my time at Greeley with fantastic mentors and programs that I've been supported through, and it would be my hope to give back and work closely with building administrators, help them think through some critical issues, some thorny problems, imagine what's possible, and that would be like a part of the job I'm really looking forward to. You know, there are, it is a little bittersweet, you know, one thing's happening is like Tony won't be there to work with, which I really enjoy working with Tony, and he's been fantastic and really is the human, like, human part of human resources in such a big way, and if I can just do a fraction of what he's been able to do, I feel like I'm going to be really successful. And, you know, as you move through the journey, each step seems to take you a little bit further away from the day-to-day work with kids, and kids are at the center of everything that we do, and we'll still be at the center of the role, but talking with them each day, learning from them, being inspired by them is something that I really absolutely love, and I'm going to be looking forward to ways to stay close to buildings because that's the best part of, I think, any teacher's job, and I think all of it started as teachers. You know, so that's really going to be wonderful. So I'm really looking forward to joining Christine, the district team, and getting to work once we find someone who's just simply amazing to be the next principal at Horace Greeley High School, so thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, and we're really excited to have you up here at this table when the time is right, so thank you. And then I just want to also mention that we have our first Bell Middle School social, where parents will have the opportunity to meet our incoming leadership team. I know there's an event at Grafflin, but there's enough time, I think, for parents in the fourth grade who'd like to make both that we'd be able to support that. And perhaps Jeff and Jen could, at 6 o'clock, maybe head down to Grafflin and see what's happening down at that school, so that would be able to support our families on who would like to be at both places at once. It gets really hard at the end of the year to make decisions around scheduling, so we're doing the best that we can, but we're really excited for our Bell families to meet Jeff and Jen. And I just want to acknowledge again Joseph and Nicole and thanking them for all their work, especially as they led the Bell Middle School through the pandemic. And I know that Joseph had sent out an email to our Bell families notifying them that he would be taking on a high school principalship in Long Island, so I really sincerely wish him well in his, in his future endeavors. Okay, so Adam's going to talk about our first grant on the, on the agenda tonight, which is amazing.
As far as I can remember, this is the first for me. You'll see on, on the agenda, 5.9, we have an $805 donation of pickles from Cory's Pickles, which we certainly, you know, we just, but we really do appreciate it because it's a fundraiser for the prom, and they actually raised nearly $2,000 from this fundraiser. So you'll see that on the agenda, and it does kind of defray some of the costs for the prom, so we certainly appreciate that donation. You'll see that there on the agenda, it's 5.9.
We also have a contract that Adam wanted to speak about as well.
Yeah, I did want to mention the Sunworks contract. That picture on the right, you probably have seen because we've used it as a visioning picture as we kind of communicated about what our Sustainability Research Center may look like. Sunworks is a company that has built 197 greenhouses in the area, and they are specialists in how to incorporate instructional curricular materials and programming into a classroom. They've put together kits where they actually bring in and build aquaponics, aquaponics kits, hydroponics kits, but they also package it with a classroom library of resource materials, curriculum materials that can be used from kindergarten all the way up through, you know, some advanced science courses. They'll provide the professional development support as part of that program. So it's all, it's really like a one-stop shop with regard to all the support we'll need in order to get the Sustainability Research Center up and running, especially the one side that we're going to have hydroponics and aquaponics, and the other side will be a soil side. So we'll have two different chambers for that facility, and you'll see that on the board agenda as well. The total contract is just over $67,000, which is sizable. We're spreading it out over two years, so we're paying for part of it this year and part of it next year, but that professional development will run through the summer and into next year, so we're excited to do that. We are starting to receive some furniture from the, for the Sustainability Research Center, and we anticipate that it'll be, we'll be able to start furnishing it in, you know, like late June, early July, get teachers in there over the summer to do some professional development, so it's coming along.
All right, so now we're going to transition into our eighth-grade algebra update for the Board of Education and the community, so I'm going to welcome Josh up to the microphone, and I'm going to transition the clicker over to Adam, so.
Great, thanks. So for the several meetings now, we've updated you on our progress around eighth-grade algebra, so we'd like to give you an update on where we are and what we've learned since our last meeting and where we're headed. The timeline at the top, the part that is not bolded, we've already done, and we've shared that, that part of the timeline with the board already, and then we have some things that I wanted to point out in terms of, like, what's happening now and where we're headed from here. You'll see our final program recommendation is going to be to you here tonight, and we'll explain why, we'll share some data that we have. The Algebra Regions Exam is actually on the 16th, and that evening we plan to have a webinar for parents, like, describing the choices and going over, you know, how that selection is going to be made. We'll open up the question and answer feature so we can field questions that parents may have. Teacher recommendations are going to go to parents by the 20th, so 6:20, parents will have their teacher recommendations. The 22nd is a board meeting. We're hoping that we can come back and just share some Algebra Regions results to give you an update on this year's students, and then our last day for faculty is 6:24, and I note that just because I know our parents will want a little bit of time between when the recommendation is given, and if they want to ask our faculty some questions, they'll have the time to do that before the faculty leaves for the summer. So that's our anticipated timeline as we go forward. The next few slides are slides that are repeats from last time, but I just wanted to ground our thinking from last time because I know there's some time and space between that presentation and this one. So the idea was to continue to focus on algebra, to explore the opportunity of potentially offering an extended algebra, an Algebra 8, and an enriched algebra, place all of our students in Algebra 8, and then have parents and students be able to opt into either enriched or extended as they see fit, and then to make recommendations from teachers for the enriched class based on the students that we think are the best fit for enriched class, and then co-teaching support, you see, for special education students that have that on their CSC would be in the Algebra 8 class. So our course options, I won't go through these, I think the board understands the choices and the community does, we've got extended algebra as a potential option, Algebra 8, enriched algebra, and we went through those at the last meeting. And then we do, oops, sorry, I went too far there. We do, we do, this again is the same slide as last time, we do have some strengths listed on the left side and then some questions that remain, but we do have some more clarity because we've collected some data between the last meeting and this one as we've surveyed parents with regard to what they believe their choice would be. So let me share some of that data, and we did send a letter with a link to a survey that asked parents, based on the information you have so far, and we didn't make teacher recommendations yet, but based on the information you have about your child and based on the information that we've shared about these potential course options, where would you, where do you think is the best fit for your child? And you can see how the results hash out there by school with Bell and Seven Bridges. You can also see the percents, and I just put a little, like, a graphic pictorial there on the right, so you get a of how our students are distributing. It is of concern that 58% of our students had, would kind of lean towards enriched, and then 42% would be like the total of 42 opted for the extended algebra and the Algebra 8. Normally, we'd see a little bit more of a, you know, like a bell curve there, but we see obviously that we're leaning more towards the enriched, which the good, good part of that is students are looking for that challenge, but the question is, is that the appropriate place for all of our students? So this, this next graph is a graph where we compared the parents' choice with MAPS scores. So we took our NWEA score, plotted them across the bottom in like score bands, and then we compared those to the parent choice. So you can see that 11 parents that had students that scored, if I go all the way to the right of the graph, 261 to 275, so, you know, very high achieving students in math, all of those students that enriched algebra, so that makes a lot of sense. And then as you go to the left, you see the next, like, most rigorous band there, and you see the majority of those selected enriched algebra, and you can see how that yellow bar, those yellow bars kind of tail off as you go to the left side. And then you see the, the red, as you'd expect, this kind of bell-shaped curve, kind of more in the middle for the red-shaped bars. It is of concern for me that we have the blue bars all, like, almost all the way across, that you can see the national mean there sits at 226 or 227 if you were to round it, but still, although we have students that potentially scored well above or did score well above that national norm, it still seems that parents may prefer that extended algebra option, so I'm not sure if that's, you know, if we just might have to do some, some coaching around what might be the best fit in those cases, but if we do do that coaching, then I would expect that extended algebra number to drop even further because I don't think that's the right fit for those, that those small bars that are more towards the right there. And that might just be misunderstanding around like the names of the courses and things like that, so we can work through that. We took the same graph and just drew a little bit of a curve so you could get a sense of how the students would distribute across the courses. So this was actual data that we collected from parents. We didn't have all, all the parents respond, but based on the actual data, this is kind of the distribution.
So here, we started to take the proportion of families that responded to extrapolate out to see what our sectioning would begin to look like. Here, we have the proportion of students and the parents that responded for each of the schools, and if we just did a straight proportion, the numbers of parents that would respond. And some of the things to note, so the extended algebra, if we use the proportion, we would have one section at Bell, but because it's under 10 at Seven Bridges, we wouldn't be, have a section there. For Algebra 8, we would have two sections at Bell, and then at Seven Bridges, if we had the 42 students and moved the nine into the Algebra 8, there would be three sections of Algebra 8, and then in, for enriched algebra, the 78 would be four sections, and at Seven Bridges, we would have three sections. And here, so in our email, we had said that if there are families that didn't want to, that wanted Algebra 8, they didn't have to respond. So we said, let's assume that all the families that didn't respond wanted Algebra 8, and so this would be here.
That slide is not the right slide. That's okay, we can, we will circle back to that one.
So, and here we just showed what the proportion would look like of responses. Had we proportioned out what students would be in each class, whether the extended, the Algebra 8 or the enriched algebra, or if we said that all the families that didn't respond are going to go into Algebra 8, and you could see how that percentage in enriched algebra drops. So what Adam had showed before, we had a high percentage of families who, in enriched algebra, it's possible that lots of those parents that wanted to be in algebra just didn't respond to this. So we think that, we predict that our real data will be somewhere between these two.
Yeah, can I say that a different, a different way to look at this? You know, just said a different way is if the parents didn't respond, who didn't respond, didn't respond because they assumed they're students, like we said in the letter, would just be put in Algebra 8, then we're looking at the red bar distribution. If we take the survey data and we just, like, proportionally expand it, assuming like, you know, it's about half of the parents responded, so we can double each of the responses to see, then we're looking at the blue, which is kind of skewed to the right, so that's where Josh was saying, we'll probably be somewhere in the middle, probably some parents just missed the survey, and other parents just assumed they'll, I assume my parent, my child's going to go to Algebra 8, so. But we have enough flexibility in the sections, that we should shift sections based on where we need the sections to be, and it's very reasonable class sizes across the board for these classes.
So again, I want to talk about the eighth grade to ninth grade transition. So the piece of this, this is the slide that we showed last time, that I want to make sure that I emphasize, is that students that take extended algebra in year one will go into extended algebra year two in ninth grade. Students that take Algebra 8 in eighth grade, if they are successful, they can generally take geometry or geometry enriched as ninth graders. If they find that they need more support in algebra, they still have that option to take extended algebra year two in ninth grade. So the students in extended algebra year one are going to be moved into extended algebra year two, but if you're in Algebra 8, you have some more flexibility and some options. And we also discussed that Algebra 8 is where our co-taught classes are going to be. So the support looks different, but, but that Algebra 8 class really can support all of our students and give them the most flexibility into their high school transition. We, on our algebra website, we had, post the last board meeting, we had 63 comments. Adam and I had read through them, and we started to code some of the data. 53 of those comments expressed support for a tiered algebra model. 23 of them expressed that they would like additional AIS. additional AIS and extra help support in our middle schools. And two of them expressed support for going to a math eight and enriched algebra model. So they, there were some questions in there that we had responded to, and there were some comments, but this is the primary crux of the data that we found that we were able to code through there. So our recommendation at this time is that all students experience an algebra focused course. We think that's very important for students to see algebra in eighth grade and prepare them into for their ninth grade. We have a three course model, an extended algebra, an algebra eight, and an enriched algebra model. And we're going to look at teachers are going to recommend students either to enriched algebra based on their multiple measures or algebra eight, but they're not going to make recommendations into the extended algebra course. And all courses will be open for all students.
All right. So we're going to wrap up just with a reminder that we have, we've been updating our algebra website regularly with information, important calendar dates. We'll update it with this information as well with the slide deck from the presentation. And then there's a survey link there on the bottom. That survey link remains open. So anybody who'd like to provide feedback on the model or has questions, they can certainly visit our algebra page. We've sent the link out to the community and, you know, enter information into the survey. And we do read it. We read every, every response that's in there. And then we, you know, helps, helps us guide decisions as we move forward. And this is where we started just the timeline as a refresher, you know, save the date, parent webinar, 6:16, 7 o'clock. We'll make sure we send that out within a day or two to our community.
Does, does the board have any questions or comments on?
Yeah, I just, I have a more of a historical question. So with the roughly, let's call it 60% of respondents saying they would choose the enriched algebra option for their kids, how did, when before, before the original change, right, the before times, it was math eight, and then it was enriched algebra, right? And so how does the 60% of parents who said they'd probably choose enriched compare to before times, how many parents opened registration opted into enriched?
Yeah. So the year before, the, the last year that we had students in that, it was 60% of students were in enriched algebra and about 40% of students were in math eight. And that had been a steady increase in enriched algebra over the past 10 years.
So enriched numbers are actually very consistent based on the, the survey from before. Okay. That's just what I wanted to make sure that I was correct on. Thank you.
I have a question. Just when we were looking at slide 27, how does this differ from this year's model? Like, could you just highlight the changes?
So it's the, yeah. So it differs from this year model of that. So all students are in algebra eight. So we only have that middle ox there. And students are either being recommended for, I'm going to go from right to left, math nine honors, geometry enriched, geometry. And then between geometry and extended algebra year two, essentially, we have a course called Cornerstones of High School Mathematics. And that's, of course, will be taught, it's taught this year and it'll be taught next year as well. And then instead of extended algebra year two, we have foundations in mathematics.
Kaylee, this is a better pathway for kids that we have proposed for next year with compared to what we're offering this year. It's clearer to parents. It's clearer to children on what path they should go in based on their experience in, in grade eight math. The concern, of course, is that we have, that we continue to have, but we will gather input from our families as offering extended algebra at all. And we have to understand how many kids want to take that class and the impact of that class on students as they move forward and on how we schedule. Because we're looking at three classes now instead of two, which impacts the entire middle school schedule for eighth graders and could result in a tracked situation that was one of the reasons why we moved to this model in the first place. But I, I think we need to, based on the feedback that we're hearing, keep an open mind and try to continue to work through this in a way that makes sense next year. And then evaluate this and determine whether or not we'll continue in this direction for the following school year if we have enough students in the extended class to run them, which may not be the case when it comes down to actual classes, assignments. But I think the grade nine program for 23, 24 makes a lot of sense. And so I'm, I think in talking with the high school math chair and with Andrew, this is a very clear pathway forward for kids that I think makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. And the other question was, the survey that is out there, that's for the entire community. It's not just open to seventh grade parents or eighth grade parents. It's open to everyone, right?
Yeah. So the survey on the website is general, you know, feedback from anyone. It's available to anyone. It's just an open website. So parents, students, teachers, anybody could, board members, whoever wants to fill it out can fill it out. The, and, and we take feedback in other ways, too. We just wanted to streamline it. So as people visited the site, if they had questions or wanted to express how they felt about it, they could. The other survey that we talked about here was specifically for seventh grade parents about their eighth grade choice. So that was a different survey that went in a letter to our seventh grade parents.
Okay, great. Can I ask one tiny little question, one more? I was reading one of the updates and I just wanted to ask about the interventions that would be provided. And I know that some of the parents have brought up concerns around interventions being given. And if it's, you know, right now in the middle school, we have after school help and it's given on two specific days, but then sometimes it interferes with other school, after school activities and, or if it's, if it's math and English offered on the same day and the child needs both, they can't possibly go to both. Or if they have to split the time, it's just not sufficient. Are we thinking about the interventions and if it's early morning, afternoon, like, you know, all of that?
Yeah. So, so all of the above, right? We, we are trying to work within our schedule, our faculty, our resources to provide as much support as possible for our students. One of the additions of this model that becomes really nice is the true co-teaching model in the classroom. So that's, that's an additional level of support. One of the things that is nice about the current model of all students taking algebra eight is that students are teamed so that the English teacher and the math teacher can decide on different days. It's possible with a multiple course situation where students are moving around, that the English teacher and the math teacher might be on the same day. But we definitely want to avoid that and make sure that there's at least one day a week to two days a week that students can have after school help. And we have our after school AIS program for students that we know we want to start as early as possible in the school year.
Right. But also thinking about students that might not necessarily qualify for AIS at a certain point in time, but then maybe in a unit or two, or maybe they've, you know, lost classroom time for extended time because they were sick or whatever, just thinking about those things. Because I know that, you know, when we think about intervention and extra help and all of these supports that we want to give to our students, want to constantly be able to operate in many different ways and at different times so that it is accessible. Because sometimes that one day just doesn't work. And, you know, you might have Hebrew school or you might have some CD, whatever it may be, or, you know.
What is going on with the sound? Let's just, can everyone turn their mics off?
All right. So there, there are really three lanes for students to access, like extra help, remediation, intervention, that are non-special education, right? Now, special education opens up a whole, a whole other continuum. But we have a STEAM teacher in each middle school. So they provide like enrichment, but also remediation. They can pull small groups, they can push in, that kind of thing. After school, we've got extra help, which most, you know, vast majority of our teachers offer, offer extra help. And that's scheduled through the buildings and through the teams. And I know the team of teachers try to work together to not create too many conflicts across the team, but that's not always of an opportunity, just in terms of the teacher schedule and things like that after school. And then the third way is the AIS that is offered after school. And I have heard of situations where math AIS is offered during a, on a particular day and the student needs, let's say, English extra help on that day. And it's the, you know, the same day. And those conflicts tend to arise just because there's too many things and not enough days. So the students have clubs and other activities and sports and Hebrew school, like you mentioned. And so you inevitably get those conflicts. Many of our teachers can be flexible and they try to, you know, I know that of some teachers that have changed days and things like that. But it seems like so often when they change one day, you create, you fix one conflict and you create another one. So, you know, between those various opportunities, the hope is that we can, you know, service as many kids as we can, but knowing that it's, it's challenging to meet all of their needs.
Okay. So I know I've been working with our teachers and doing extra help in their classes today. And they have always been as accommodating as they can to meet with their students. And, and I think you said it, during their lunch period, after school, multiple days, and, and make sure. And I also think they are also trying to provide a type of instruction where they can meet their kids in small groups, right? So that they could really start to target what, what does a student need? So that they're not overwhelmed with having to stay every day after school and in that classroom. And I think that this is an important model to be able to support our students where they're at. So they don't feel overwhelmed by the math and so that they could go attend all of the things that they want to attend also.
I'm turning it on. Yes, thank you. Oh, maybe it is my mic. Oh, because I think I'm sitting right here. But yes, thank you. And I, I am in agreement with that. And I just, I do want to say for like on the record that, you know, I do know that teachers go above and beyond and trying to find time and spaces to provide these types of support. But I just wanted to bring it up just to kind of have intervention and support, just, you know, not on the back burner, but, you know, at the top of our list. Because, you know, the whole point of doing this is to make sure that kids will be successful in whatever they, you know, choose. And, you know, again, you might not need support, you know, the first three months into the year, but you might need it come later. And there's more difficult topics than just being added on to, to the curriculum. So, thank you.
Okay. Let's see how we do. Well, first of all, thank you for the, you know, granular deep dive into this whole area. And I think the community, I don't know who's making the noise here. Okay. Has really benefited. And I think it's very clear how much you took into account, community feedback, all the research you did into this. It's very clear that everyone's in agreement now that this is a model where our kids can be successful, I think, and everyone feels comfortable with this. I'm looking at it and it seems like a lot of possibilities and a lot of opportunities to try and make sure that everyone feels good about their eighth grade math choice. And, and I understand the concept of, of the tracking, like Christine said, but I also really think that we heard from a lot of people that maybe at this level, they're just, it just didn't work to have them all in the same class, given what the subject matter was. And, and I think that's kind of reflected that we still see 60% of kids going into enriched algebra when, you know, a lot of the, the upset and, and heartache, and no one wants to hear that about math, might have been solved by just moving people around a little. So I'm very grateful that all the work that you did, which was tremendous. So I really, I support this. I think it's wonderful. And I, I hope that a lot of the parents with upcoming eighth graders feel very good about this. The only other thing in terms of, and I know that you're deciding in terms of running the extended algebra, and I know we always have to see in terms of classes where the numbers fall. My only concern would be, I don't know that we've ever had a math option like this that could possibly be offered at one school and not another because of the numbers. So I know that that fell the way it did at Seven Bridges and Bell, but that would just be a concern for me. And I don't know what we would do if that's where it ended up.
I think, I think that's a good point. And I think we really need to have a better understanding of where that lands. Because, I mean, just to be honest, we're not, we're not going to offer an extended algebra for two children. It doesn't make sense. So I think that we'll have more information to answer that question at our next meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Warren, did you have anything? Are you still out there?
I'm here. No, Jane asked my question. Thank you, Jane.
Okay. All right. So I just want to thank Adam and Josh. There's a lot of work. There's a lot of things happening in the office to get ready for this presentation, a lot of analysis, and a lot of good thinking around what's best for our students based on the feedback that we're hearing from parents, but also the, the data that we have. So hopefully we found a solution to the concerns, but also a pathway to move forward that we feel is in the best academic interest of our, of our students. So we'll see where we land next week when we start to place kids in classes. I don't know. Let me see here. Okay. So then my last slide before I introduce Jonathan is just an update. We have a lot happening in the next two weeks. We have our prom on Friday and grappling is presenting Aladdin. And we have our celebrations next week. We have our senior athlete celebration. We have our concerts, all of which are going to be outside at Seven Bridges, Bell, and really, the kids are coming out of their senior experiences. So they'll be presenting next week as well. We have our car parade on Friday. We have graduation the next, next Saturday. And then of course, as Hillary mentioned, we have Juneteenth on the Monday. And then we have our next meeting on the evening of all of our moving up celebrations. So we're really looking forward to concluding our school year in the next few weeks and celebrating with our families, the amazing accomplishments of our children. So at this point, we're going to transition into our strategic planning presentation. And I'd like to introduce to you, reintroduce you Jonathan Costa. He has engaged in our strategic planning process here in our district on two other occasions. He is the, the facilitator of the district strategic plan of the athletic department strategic plan. And now he's presenting to you our special education strategic plan. But before Jonathan begins, I'd like Jamie to recognize members of the strategic planning committee who are in the audience this evening. So, Jamie?
So, under Jonathan's facilitation and direction, we had a committee that was composed of many people. And some of them, not only did they give their time to participate in really unpacking the audit that was done and to help us process and think through how we would organize it and a plan to move forward. They're also giving their time this evening to show their support for their work. So I would like to acknowledge, and I'm looking out there to see who is here, but we have with us, certainly Hillary is here. She represented the Board of Education. Gina Malmgren is the Chappaqua PTA Special Ed Chair.
Give a wave.
Here's Gina. And Dr. Ackerman was on. Andrew Lennon was there. And Adam Pease, Tony Sinanis, Karen Smith, the Director of Special Education, who is out in our audience, joined us for the work. So did Sarah Moskowitz, one of our special education teachers. Sarah Kenny, who's not with us tonight. Tanya Wilson represented the elementary schools, was, is not with us tonight. Representing our middle schools is Joe Maza, Principal of Seven Bridges. Andrew Corsilia is here representing the high school. Rosa Amendola is one of our CSC chairs. And, and certainly I participated. But before I hand it over to Jonathan, I just want to thank everybody who participated in the work. I appreciate everything you did to help get this work done. And I am going to count on all of you and others to join me as we do the work that's going to come next. But Jonathan will lead us through that. Thanks, Jonathan. Here's handing it off to you.
All right. And Jamie's reward for all that wonderful work is that her name appears on just about every task that needs to be completed. So our challenge and our, our task from Christine was to review the Public Consulting Group's report, which I'm sure you're familiar with. It's about 120 pages worth of data and analysis on the audit of the existing program. So when we gathered the team together, this is not like normal strategic planning in that when you're dealing in the world of special education, there are numerous frameworks and guidelines that you must follow. It is a highly regulated and, and structured process. So really, what our team began with was just thinking through the various frames of reference that you have to navigate. In addition to the report, there are existing federal the report, there are existing federal and state statutes related not only to special education generally, but inclusion, equity, diversity, many important guidelines, both legal and ethical, that need to be followed when working through the pathway of special education. In addition to that, we have existing Chappaqua commitments to an inclusive framework for education, a, a strong belief that it's important that all students, regardless of their background, have an equal opportunity to enjoy all of the programming and all of the educational benefits that are offered to a Chappaqua student. The challenge for us in working through that was a changing notion of what the best way to reach that inclusive education model looks like. And you'll see that this, this comes up not only in the audit, in the recommendation, but in the tasks moving forward. We had a framework for defining characteristics of an effective inclusion model in Chappaqua, that all students will be supported with specific learning environments that allow them to access learning most consistently, that there'll be a robust continuum of service provision, that they'll utilize various inclusion models approaches, that there will be flexibility and fluidity around the continuum, so we can change to meet the needs as they shift and change, and that students will be able to meaningfully participate in their instruction. So, these were sort of the frameworks that we were operating in as we entered into a discussion around the report's recommendations. And if you remember the report itself, it was framed in 18 different recommendations that fell into six categories. So, the first thing we did as a group was split into six different teams to look through those recommendations. First, to make a determination of what of those recommendations are already being implemented in the district. So, the district was already leaning into some of the items in the report, and those are highlighted in green in, in this grid. There, the next column, the developing column, it was decided that these were worthy of implementation, and we needed to implement them. And finally, the purple 14 was a recommendation for changing the way the district budgets for special education on a building-by-building basis, that the committee essentially rejected as not being worth the effort, because the district already has an effective process that allows it to put resources where they are needed. And essentially, the group decided that that was one of the recommendations that we would essentially forego. So, given the 17 remaining recommendations, and the current state of work of the ones that were underway and those that needed to be developed, we then reorganized them into three categories that sequenced them according to a rollout of the, of the work that made sense. Because some of the foundational recommendations, and you'll see these in category one, are really important foundational decisions that need to be made prior to the rest of the work falling into place. So, these questions that you see on the screen right now are all questions that need to be answered by the district in, in order to really frame and complete the tasks in category one. And these are all issues raised by the report, raised by the district's current experience with its delivery of special education services. And all of these really critical decisions are going to be made as part of the work that you see, whoops, in category one. And here you will see all of those questions laid out in a framework that is sequenced according to decisions that need, need to be made first, so they waterfall down through the, through the rest of the program. And you can see the first and most important is to restructure, build, and plan for a continuum of services for students in special education to reflect the program philosophy. And that cat, that important first step is broken out into a series of action steps with recommended outcomes. And Karen and Jamie are primarily responsible for that. And once those decisions are made, then the rest of the category one work can continue, explore scheduling practices to implement the decisions made for the, in the, in the first segment of work, and then to refocus and rethink how we deliver multi-tiered systems of support, so that we have the greatest degree of flexibility and meet as many student needs as is humanly possible, given the system and the resources and the delivery of services.
May I say something? This is a really important slide for us. Not that all slides here aren't important, but this slide in particular, I think, is what members of our special education community are most concerned about. So, what you see here is a full analysis of our program. And with the exception of implementation of co-taught algebra, which we know will happen next year, we're really taking a hard look at what we're offering, and if we need to make some adjustments. So, you see on here, we have pathways at the high school. Does it make sense to move that down to the middle school or the elementary school? Does it make sense to offer resource or learning center K8 on a more consistent basis? Do we have to, we should be looking at whether or not it makes sense to have true co-taught classes throughout the district. So, as we move forward in our work, we're going to be revisiting this slide often to give you updates on where we are in this process, because this is, this is a lot of what concern and question surrounding our special education program centered on for our families and feedback we receive from our staff. So, I just want to highlight this so people understand part of what our work will look like over the next three years, as we really analyze whether or not we have to reconstruct or reconfigure our offerings for our students. And I want to thank Jamie and Karen in advance, because this is a, a large task for us to undertake, because in this district, and I firmly believe in this, inclusion is seen as a civil rights issue. And I, and I'm grounded in that, in that position. But I also think we need to be realistic about, at what point do we need to consider different opportunities for kids to maximize their learning, so that they can stay in district in particular. So, these will be important conversations for us to have, and I, and I want to just thank Jonathan for providing, for providing us a structure through this process in order for us to have those conversations. So, all right. I'm not going to take as much time on the other slides, but this one is very important for your consideration. All right, Jonathan, please.
Sure. With those really important structures framed, the second category of work and recommendations were really around program system supports and implementation. So, increasing special ed leadership presence in schools, improving IEP development to increase efficiency, offering and supporting professional learning to integrate critical special education representation into the process, and revising and sharing special education policy and procedures with the public, with parents, addressing the accuracy of testing the IEP completion, and supporting a robust assistive tech approach that provides for regular staff and parent training. And those tasks are laid out in a similar scope of work, again, following the foundation created by the decisions made in category one.
So, I just want to point out very quickly on this slide. So, I, I don't think there'd be any disconnect between what we've been hearing from our parents over the past, I've been here now for five years, around their concerns about our special education program, and the ways in which they, they suggest that we communicate how we support our kids, and the action steps and recommendations that came out of our strategic planning committee. So, I'm, I'm happy that we've made some movement towards addressing many of those concerns that have been brought forward. And I look forward to continue to address ways to better support our families. But I do want to point out for you, one of the things that we'll have to discuss as a, as a collective group, and feedback that we received through the audit that we've talked about when they presented to us, is really defining Phillips' role in his work with special education, because there, there needs to be clarity around that for the community, whether that is in the work that he's doing, or redefining what his role is, because there seems to be confusion around his support of, of inclusive practices with regards to special education, and our position that we have an entire office who's dedicated to supporting inclusion through special education. So, we just think, we need to talk about that more. And that came out loud and clear in the strategic plan, and that's not something that's been on our, our radar, because, because Phillips' position is new. So, there's confusion around his title and what his role is in special education. So, we, we're going to be needing to talk about that in the fall. So...
And to highlight Christine's admonition around the engagement of families, this is the second part of category two. Again, this is just the breakout of the tasks that I reviewed on the previous slide. But as Christine mentioned, the critical engagement of parents in the community around the improvement of the program, to make sure parents are communicated with, that they are engaged in the process, and that the process is as transparent as is legally possible. So, being transparent about the implementation of the recommendations is a critical task, communicating the rationale and progress, considering additional engagement opportunities and possible trainings, and some are already underway. We discussed creating a glossary of terms, possible outlining of general processes that can be shared publicly, and engaging in collaborative practices for specific parent communications, to make sure that those critical constituents are brought into the process and understand it, so that everyone is on essentially the same page on, on what is happening. And there is a lot to do. That's it.
So, I, at this point, does the board have questions for Jonathan, or for Jamie, or Hillary, or I, as members of the process, that we can help clarify? What I like about this presentation, it's very clear what we're working on. And I think that's extremely important for our families. We're in other places, on purpose, our, our work around the district special target areas in our strategic plan is more general. This is really specific, and I, I think that helps with transparency around how we're moving forward to address the target areas identified in that report. So, that was intentional, and I, and I think it was smart for the committee to do.
I don't actually have a question.
I'm not just saying that, because I was on it.
I don't have a question, because I was there. But I just want to say thank you, because this was really a, really incredibly well-run process. And, and that's you, Jonathan, and you, Jamie, and, and really, I think that what's interesting about this whole special education strategic initiative is that it's really been consistent throughout. Like, so the feedback that we got through the audit was really consistent with the feedback we've gotten from parents and from the community. And that was really consistent with, you know, how this planning team looked at the work that needs to be done. And, and I think that that's a good thing, right? Like, there, there weren't really any outlying issues. There was nothing that came up where we were like, wow, we had no idea anybody was going to raise that, or that really came out of left field. So, I think that, that what's good about this is we have a very clear framework, and that doesn't mean that, you know, it dictates what order things are to be tackled in or anything like that. But I think that we have a really good working framework on what needs to be done, how we can make the district even better than it already is. And, and it's pretty good. But let's, you know, there's, there's, there were things that were identified, and I, I think it's useful that they lined up with the, the concerns that the parents and the community have been raising, because it shows that the audit really did get to the issues that people were concerned about. And now this, this team is working on the issues that the audit got to, which are the issues that people are concerned about. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and that I, I do feel really good about this process and the work moving forward.
Warren has a question.
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I have a statement. Thank you, Jonathan, for really presenting this well, and for the team for putting this all together. I think this is what we've really been looking for. As, it could come as no surprise, my disappointment in the presentation, or the people who did the audit, as I said, I believe the data we received from the audit was good. However, the presentation they provided to the board was inadequate. I think you put this all together in a great, great presentation, Jonathan. Lets us know where we are, how we can move forward. This is what we needed. So, thank you so much for all your hard work, and for that of the team.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. This is, you know, really hard work. It's fraught with anxiety from staff, families, students, support staff. This is an area that can create a lot of, you know, unnecessary drama and emotion, and you guys just streamlined and focused on, here's what we need to improve on, and here's how we're going to do it. And I think that kind of transparency and focus is what everyone needs and wants to kind of bring that temperature down. And I really thank you for all that work.
I, I feel the same way, and I think that's exactly right, in terms of streamlining all the recommendations that we had. And we've worked with you before, Jonathan, and you've done a really great job of, of being very specific. And even though there's a lot to do, we, we see in front of us what it is to be done, and it's work that everyone wants to do. I know there's a lot on Jamie's plate and Karen's, too. But this is really important work, and it's really important for so, so many families in our district, and it's important for us to get it right. So, I, I, I think we have a framework set up to help us do that. And I really, I have a big thank you for everyone involved in this strategic plan. And my only question is, where do we go, like, next year to assess how the progress is? Like, what's, what's the next step to make sure that we're getting there? And, and what...
That's a, that's a great question. So, there's a reporting mechanism in the strategic plan where the, Jamie will be reporting to you. I have to check it. I think we put by semester our progress.
Okay, great.
Because we felt it was important to put that structure within the plan itself.
I think that's great. Yes, thank you.
That's, that's the plan.
And that's it. Thank you so much.
I always appreciate being invited to come back to Chappaqua.
Oh, yeah.
Get from point A to point B and keep going on.
So, I just have a comment, too. Thank you. And just to piggyback off of what everyone on the board has said already, and talking about streamlining, how I think this is a very strong plan, and I think it just goes to show that it's strong, and it, and hopefully it'll be very successful, because I think you guys all came together as a team. And so even though different people have different jobs in the community and in the district, some people have more, you know, communications with parents or people in the community, and some, you know, people are working at the top with the administration. And then some people are actually in the classroom with the kids day to day. And the fact that everybody came together and thought about this, and talked about this, and had conversations. So, it's not like only one group of people knew about this situation, and then another group of said, oh, I never heard about this. It's just everybody came together and said, here, this is what I've heard, and this is what I know, this is what I've seen. What, what are we going to do about this? And how are we going to fix this? And how are we going to make it better? And I, I think that just shows that it's going to be great, and it's going to be a success. So, thank you for all the hard work, to the team out there, too.
None of it would have been possible without Christine's icebreakers.
Oh, yeah. You were amazing. Well, on that note, thank you, Jonathan, for joining us.
Thank you.
And for leading this work. We really appreciate you and your perspective and your ability to organize us in a way that allows us to do the work effectively. So, thank you, Jonathan. We'll see you later. And thank you to the team out there. And that is it for the superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to committee reports. Go ahead, Jane. I'm like, I don't remember if I've...
I, I think there's just a lot of year-end wrap-ups. You and I, we had a communications advisory... You and I, we had a communications advisory.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Committee meeting. So much has happened in the past couple of weeks. So first of all, thank you to all of members who have been able to come in, some have not been able to, but we really appreciated the community members that were able to join us. There wasn't a lot to report, and I know that we've talked about this before, that those assignments, you know, and what those assignments are and applications, and we'll send something out to the community this summer for people that are interested in being community members on our committees. But we just put out there, you know, some questions, suggestions, how our communications have gone with respect to eighth grade algebra, with respect to our community newsletter, et cetera. So we do get some feedback on them, and there are takeaways that we're going to try and implement next year in terms of making our communications, again, more streamlined, easier to read. You know, we're always trying to refine our communications so that our, you know, community members are not bombarded, yet they get the information that they really need and want and can access it very easily. So that was really helpful. That was our last meeting of the year. There was a year-end meeting for the Harsh Greeley Scholarship Fund. I'm the liaison there. That was just to really talk about all the funds they raised to help our Greeley grads go to college. It's an unbelievable program, and it's an unbelievable initiative every year, and they make a lot of money that really goes a long way for all of our students to make college affordable and possible. And they are trying to, they're just discussing there will be a change of leadership, like in all of these organizations every year, trying to figure out how they do their benefit. It's had to be remote the last couple of years, and we like to honor, you know, the people that we're honoring. You want to do something in person, what's the best way to do that moving forward? So there were some discussions on that, but there was also a celebration of the funds that are raised. And just please remember, for people that haven't applied yet, you know, to check what all those deadlines are because it's really, it's critical. And then there was a sports boosters meeting last night, which, again, was sort of a farewell to Jeff, which everyone was very sad about because he's done an unbelievable job this year as our athletic director. But like we said, there's changes that keep wonderful people in our district, so we're very excited that he's staying here at Bell. Jamie joined us last night, and we did mention that it was, it was a real, a real coup to get Jamie over here, who's so experienced, and so Christine is an unbelievable, unbelievably persuasive recruiter. So we have two wonderful people in our district now. We have Jamie and we have Jeff. And I just want to thank Jennifer Bergen, who's been an unbelievable leader of the sports boosters, and she's handing that off to Mike Rose next year. But they have really done so much to, you know, increase the visibility of our sports teams and to get so many more kids active in sports in a capacity, even if they're not playing, they're maybe writing about it, they're announcing, et cetera, and just build school spirit with all the events in the Greeley zone and everything. So a big thank you to the sports boosters this year. And then we had a health and safety committee meeting. Warren unfortunately could not join us, so I was the only board member there, and Andrew Lennon was there, obviously, and Joe joined us, our usual members. We always have Joe, who's our head of facilities, and we have Police Chief Carroll, and we have the Regional Director of Safety from Bosse's. And obviously, in light of everything which you spoke about earlier, Hillary, what happened in Texas and what's happening across our country is deeply disturbing and very upsetting for so many of our parents, especially those with elementary school children right now that really felt devastated by this. And a number of them chose to join our meeting, which is open, and so they were able to speak with us during our roundtable discussion. But I appreciate that Andrew made sure that we really had a discussion of what safety and security measures we do take. And as we, I know we've mentioned before in these meetings, that matters of health and safety are matters for executive session and are confidential because we do not want to compromise the safety of everyone in our buildings by talking in detail about what our safety plans and protocols are. So it's a fine line, a lot of times, between informing the community what we're doing and making sure that everything we're doing keeps us safe. So we did get parent input. I know there's a lot of discussion whether we should have, we have a SRO here at the high school, Michelle, who her contract's up for renewal on tonight's agenda, and she's developed an unbelievable relationship here at Greeley. She's been coaches, she's, the students love her, and she does a wonderful job here. And a lot of parents have, or a number of parents have reached out to us about whether we should have SROs in all of our buildings and obviously wanted to know what we are doing to keep our students and our faculty and our staff safe. So we went through some of that at the meeting. We heard from our Regional Security Director Bosse's, we heard from Chief Carroll. We went over the fact that we have had a safety audit about four years ago here, and we implemented very, many, many of those procedures. Most importantly, those mantraps that we have at the elementary school, which are critical and the single point of entry. We have openly discussed here at this meeting that Greeley is an open campus, and that has provided, you know, a challenge for us. That's why we have Michelle here as an SRO. But we realized that it, as we told the, all the members in attendance at that meeting, we are consistently and constantly talking about safety in our schools, and we will continue to do that this summer. But in light of what's going on, we have no control over guns in our country and what the government chooses to do in terms of limiting assault rifles. We have no control over that, but we have control over what we can do with the funds that we have to try and keep everyone here as safe as possible. And we want to make sure that we're using that in the most efficient way as possible and the best way possible. So we think that it is time, although we do have a wonderful safety audit. And we also had a short-term and a long-term planning team on safety. We had a task force that was in 18 and 19. So we have talked about this a lot, but we think it is time to do another safety audit. And so perhaps at the next board meeting, that can be a resolution here. I think that's, you know, and Andrew can speak to that as well if he wants to add anything about the meeting, but I think that that's, you know, we want the community to know that we take this extremely seriously. It's our utmost priority to keep everyone in our building safe. But there are a lot of, there are a lot of views on that, a lot of ways to do that, and we have implemented a lot already, so we want to see what we can do to even make it better. So I think another safety audit would be, would be helpful. And that may include also surveys to the community in terms of their thoughts on this. We did tell the attendees at the meeting that when we did this a few years ago, it was not universal in terms of a lot of the measures, whether it was an SRO and having someone armed at all of our schools. And community members have a big difference of opinion on this, so we might need to survey the community again to see what community sentiment is. We know that closing up Greeley would require a big financial commitment, so it's all information that we want to discuss with the public, and I think the first step might be another safety audit. So there we go.
Yeah, I would just like to add, before we moved in the direction of having an SRO in Greeley, we had two audits, one from Bosse's and one from Alteris.
Yes.
And we also hired a private survey company to ask our community certain questions to understand what the support was for steps that we may or may not take with regards to our buildings, which included interior cameras, the person traps, electronic locking systems that are different in Greeley compared to other places, and the police officer who's now been assigned to Greeley that we support financially. So while I can understand, and I understand the feedback parents share with us, thinking that, well, everyone feels the same way I do because of what happened, that was not the outcome after we did this process following Parkland. And so I totally agree with the Health and Safety Committee. It is time for us to do another audit, especially since the task force that took a hard look at Greeley recommended that we move forward and ask the community through a bond if we should have a single point of entrance.
Right.
So we need to revisit that. It got sidetracked because of COVID, which is understandable, but I think at some point we're going to need to come forward and allow the community to make a decision on that recommendation. But I think in order for us to have that conversation, a current audit is necessary because it's now, I think, like, three or four years old.
Yes.
So Andrew and I will work on what makes sense in terms of who should do that audit, and we'll come to the next meeting with some recommendations for you.
That sounds great. Thank you. I think, and I'm done with my committee stuff.
Did you, go ahead, Warren. Warren, did you want to say something?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, as Jamie mentioned, I was unfortunately not able to make the Health and Safety meeting the other day. Working with, I'm working with Andrew. We have to schedule a audit committee meeting very quickly because we have to do our next, start our audit for this past year, and we're still in the middle of New York State financial audit of our, of our district. So that's just about, that's just a quick catch-up on there.
And we had a facilities committee meeting, and Andrew, do you want to speak on that? I know that I was driving during that time, but I'm like looking at the notes. I know Joe Gromando, and you updated a lot of the Carroll project underway and just all the summer projects that's coming up.
Yep, I think some of the key things that we just noted on is the boiler project is basically done. We just need to cut over that line, and that'll happen once school lets out because we were concerned that we weren't able to close it up. So that's why that is not done. And the Sustainability Research Center is well underway, and we should have that ready by July 1st with all the internal controls for the environmental control system completed then.
And then the West Orchard roof.
Oh, and West Orchard roof, yes. So on tonight's agenda, you'll see that there's a resolution to award the West Orchard roof to our roofing repair contractor. So we'll be starting on that project this summer.
Thank you. And then we also had a wellness committee meeting, which I was also driving at that time, but Jamie could summarize for us.
Sure. We met on May 24th, and what was so interesting was the day that we met, somebody said, do anybody realize that this is Wellness Week? So we met on Wellness Week and missed an opportunity to do something to really highlight Wellness Week in our district. So certainly, we made a note to do that for next year, that we didn't want to miss that opportunity again. But I would say the Wellness Committee spent the most, spent most of this year planning for what we're going to do next year, and we have in place a plan to offer the sports nutrition programs that were offered in collaboration with the boosters, right, Jane? It was with the boosters, and that was very well received. So we have a plan to speak to Jamie as soon as he gets here to set those up so that we can do them at, in the, at the beginning of the fall sports season, at the beginning of the winter sports season, and spring, because that seemed to have been really well, very well received. It was also mentioned that last year, somebody drafted a wellness newsletter, so we want to bring that back next year to have three times during the year, something around wellness to share with families of things that can be done. And then we are, we have a very exciting and creative plan to do a Wellness Day, a little, a little more elaborate than we did this past year with our middle schools, but the week of holiday break, where it's not so intrusive into the school schedule because it's the day before break and kids are looking forward to taking that time off. But how can we use that time to provide some education on fitness and exercise and stress management, electronic detox, and nutrition and body image? So we have a good plan moving forward into next school year.
Yes, Tony and I can give an update on the CARES committee. So we had met in the high school in Phillip and Tinuke, had facilitated a session around equity that reflected some of their work with the fellowship, so the CARES committee could have an understanding of what that professional learning looked like. Tony, did you want to add to?
Just to spotlight what Christine just shared, it really was a sort of greatest hits of the work that we did in the fellowship and in our color lines, in service, and then some of the PD that Phillip and Tinuke have facilitated for staff in the day. So it was a great opportunity for us to highlight some of the work that's happening internally around professional learning for our families, as primarily the people there were, were parents on the committee.
And then to receive feedback from them on their impressions from our work, and then to talk about how to communicate that out to the larger community. Anything else, Tony? Okay.
Well, good work on all those committees. Our audience is dwindling. I was going to say that brings us to our public comment period, but there's almost nobody left. It does nonetheless bring us to our public comment period. We welcome public comments, and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may also be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding the comments presented. So if you'd like to make a public comment. Nope. All righty then. That brings us to approvals and ratifications. Can I have a motion, please? Can I have a motion, please, for items 3.1 and 3.2, which are accepting the minutes of the May 19th and the June 2nd meetings respectively?
I move.
Second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
It is with mixed emotions. I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I move.
Any questions? Discussion?
Can we say no? Can we say no? Like, how does this work?
I've tried it before over the years. Say no.
It wouldn't be nice.
Wouldn't be nice.
It wouldn't be nice, but you know where our hearts are.
All right, all in favor?
It is with great excitement. I recommend 4.2 non-instructional.
I will move 4.2.
I will second.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so that brings us to five, which is our consent agenda. The use of consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting in a single motion those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. So as a preliminary measure, does anybody want to remove anything from five? Okay. Then I will move the consent agenda, which is items 5.1 through 5.18.
A second.
Are there any questions or discussions on anything under there? It includes CSE summaries, a couple of contracts, one of which Dr. Ackerman mentioned, the donation of pickles, which is a new one for us and is exciting, an SMOA. So any questions or discussion? Then all in favor, please say aye.
Can I just stop for a second? Oh, were you going to say something, Warren?
No, I was aye.
So I just want to acknowledge that the board has approved the three-year contract for the CCT, so I want to thank Miriam Lungobardi and her team as they worked together with our team, Tony, Andrew Lennon, and David Shaw, and I, to successfully come to a new agreement, and thank you to the Board of Education for approving it. Very pleased we were able to negotiate their new contract before their current contract expired. And so I'd like to extend my gratitude to the CCT team on all their hard work to make this happen collectively for the district. So thank you.
Great. So that brings us to six. Can I have a motion, please, for item 6.1 through 6.5, which is just acknowledging contracts already approved by, approved by the superintendent per Board Policy 6085?
I move 6.1 through 6.5.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? There's nothing under seven, under eight. It's just 8.1. I will move 8.1, which is receipt, acknowledging receipt of the claims auditor report for April of 2022. Can I have a second?
A second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? That brings us to our notice of future meetings. Our next meeting is Wednesday, June 22nd at 7:30. We will be here with the district-wide strategic plan update, and then our next meeting after that, most of us will be here, is our reorg meeting on July 6th, also here. Can I have a motion, please? Can I have a motion, please, to adjourn tonight's meeting at 9:25 PM?
A second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.